Six o'clock and we want to call this meeting back to order. At this time, I'd like to ask you to remember members of our staff who have lost relatives or loved ones, and of course Jonathan Haynes, he's lost his father, and Ms. Hamby lost her mother. So if you would, remember those folks. And tomorrow being Veterans Day, I want to say that I attended the Veterans Day program today at West Middle School, and it was very, very good. And the guest speaker was our own Chad Marsh. And Chad reminded me of a few things, and I wanted to just kind of touch base with a couple of these things concerning veterans. And one thing that I guess everybody knows, but North Carolina is one of the most populated states for veterans there is. And you know, in North Carolina, only 7% of the population is a veteran. So veterans are a small minority, and didn't realize that, but we really have a good crowd here in our school system with a lot of accolades and a lot of accomplishments by being a veteran. I am a veteran, of course Paul Baker's a veteran and Greg's a veteran. And Chad, one thing I want to say is you can still accomplish a lot even if you go in enlisted into the military. And of course, first, aren't Miley, we appreciate you and NJRTC, but Mr. Marsh, well Lieutenant Commander Marsh, he went in enlisted and became an officer, and look where he is now. And he owes, he admitted he owed a lot of that to his service connections. And I'm going to tell you, I look, I look around the room, and I don't know if Mr. Wheeler's here or not, but he was a veteran, and I'm telling you, enlisted. And I look back and I see Mr. Carson, a veteran. And they're principals. And the military instills things on you and in you that you want to be a leader. And you know, I'm going to be honest, if there's anybody here, I want to follow, it's a veteran because you know they passed a test and can do the job, and they're not going to back up on you. They're going to keep going forward. And not only that, Mr. Carson, Ms. Carson was also a veteran. And look, you know, it's just so great that you folks have just come to where you are today and set such a shining example. And with that being said, Happy Veterans Day to everybody. And of course, it brings on a vacation day for tomorrow, but at this time, we're going to have a nimication, and I invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silence. And I'm going to ask Mr. Abernathy to return thanks for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Lord, we give you thanks and praise, and we do want to remember our veterans and all of those that fought and defended. This is not Memorial Day, but endiary for the freedoms that we enjoy, and we thank you for that. We thank you for the gifts and the blessings that you have bestowed on us. We ask that you guide and lead the decision-making of this board. We ask that you be with this board and faculty and employees and students. Keep them safe and help them to be successful in their academic endeavors. Lord, most of all, grant us peace, and we pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, at this time, Mr. McGinnis, I would ask that you introduce our color guard.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have the presentation of colors by the McDowell High School NJRTC Color Guard. If y'all please stand for the presentation of colors.
Color guard. Attention, set, ready. Ready, put, go. Coats. Halt. Right. Coats.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Set, ready. Coats. Ready, put, coat. Right. Base. Go.
Dr. Gredd, turn to your view screen.
All right. Good evening, folks. Chairman Frank, Vice Chairman Abernathy, ladies and gentlemen of the board, folks out there with us tonight, and especially our veterans. Just kind of jump right into it. Tonight, we're on the cusp of the Veterans Day holiday. I want to recognize any veterans that we have with us this evening. Veterans, if you are able and willing, please stand. Thank you. November the 11th marks a day when we honor all who have served in the United States Armed Forces. The sacrifices and challenge that accompany your service should be consistently recognized and remembered, especially on Veterans Day. Those sacrifices that protect our freedoms and rights so that we can have meetings such as this Board of Education meeting should never be taken for granted and therefore be treated with integrity and respect. Tonight, we thank you for your service, ensuring that our freedoms in this great nation remain intact. Folks, please join me in giving our members, veterans, a round of applause this evening. Thank you. Last week marked the end of the fall seasons for sports. I'm happy to announce that we reached some significant milestones this fall on the field and the court. Our ladies volleyball and men's soccer, as well as our football teams, all earned the opportunity to participate in the state playoffs. We are proud of our team, and I look forward to watching our winter sports seasons take shape in the coming weeks. Sir, I'm not sure that we've had that happen in quite some time. I'm very proud of our folks. Tonight, I also want to take a moment to thank our teachers and administrator for helping us to work to be compliant with state law and House Bill 805, cataloging classroom books and publishing them online. This law took shape early this year, leaving our teachers and staff very little time to become compliant. Thanks to Ms. Crystal Hamby's research into finding a scanning tool that aided our teachers and saved valuable classroom time. I also want to thank our principals for their creativity in providing time for scanning and even working with students from MECE and MAI to earn volunteer hours. We are nearing the completion of this project. We must comply with the law and offer parents the opportunity to review our materials. Although the timing was not ideal, I'm proud of our work and stand behind how the McDowell County Schools attacked this issue and made short work of a task, allowing our teachers to stay focused on teaching. And again, thank our teachers and administrators for your hard work. Tonight, I'm happy to report that we have met with DOT, and they are studying the traffic flows at Eastfield Global Magnet and Marion Elementary School. They will soon be evaluating traffic around the new school site on Highway 70. Keep in mind that we are awaiting the results of the grant that we submitted for a new school. Our fingers are certainly crossed. And we hope to hear back from the state before Christmas. We are also in the final stages of architecture and engineering the West McDowell Middle School Field Project, which is part of the Helene Recovery Grant Fund to elevate the field and divert water off the high school hill. Board, we've asked the architects from Hollerin-Hamrick to provide you with an overview of the project in December. I think you all will be pleased with what you see, and I certainly appreciate the work the building and grounds has put into that project. Finally, tonight, I want to recognize Ms. Ashley MacArthur. Her work to secure $145,000 grant to maintain the Leader in Me program for another year. We're very proud of Ms. MacArthur. Ms. MacArthur also represented us, represented North Carolina and McDowell County Schools in Dallas, Texas last week. She was doing work and then giving a presentation on working with students that would fall into McKenty-Vento services. Thank you, Ms. MacArthur. We're very proud of you. And thank you, Mr. Frank and the board. That concludes my report.
Go ahead, staff recognition.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll be doing our staff recognitions. Ms. Dobbs?
Good evening, Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, members of the board, Dr. Gredd, and our esteemed guests. I'm excited for our first recognition tonight to recognize our 25-26 McDowell County Schools' Principal of the Year, Ms. Erin Rayfield. Ms. Rayfield, if you'll come up front. She loves the attention on her. I would like to read the press release about Ms. Rayfield so we can truly appreciate her accomplishments. Erin Rayfield, Principal of McDowell Early College, was named the 2026 McDowell County Schools' Principal of the Year. Ms. Rayfield was surprised by the announcement in front of McDowell Early College student and staff, Superintendent Tracy Gredd, and other district leaders. The process for choosing the Principal of the Year begins with nominations from the McDowell County Schools' leadership team. Directors and principals have the opportunity to nominate a principal who fosters a culture of collaboration, encourages academic innovation, and leads with integrity and compassion. Principals across the district then vote on the nominee they believe best exemplifies these qualities. So in other words, to be elected from your, by your peers is a huge honor. Ms. Rayfield was deeply honored by the recognition. Sharing, receiving this award is truly humbling, but it's a reflection of the extraordinary people I've been fortunate enough to work with throughout my career. I'm surrounded by a team of dedicated teachers and staff who pour their hearts into our school community, and I've been lucky to have the guidance and encouragement of our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and district leaders. Leadership is a collaborative effort, and I'm proud to contribute to a system where teamwork drives meaningful outcomes for students. Ms. Rayfield began her teaching career in 2008 at Old Ford Elementary. She then joined West Marion Elementary School, where she taught from August 1st, 2009, to June 30th, 2021. In August 2021, she advanced into administration as Assistant Principal at West McDowell Middle School, even though I fought for her to be at West Marion, serving there until June 30th, 2023. From July 2023 through June 2025, Ms. Rayfield served as Principal at Pleasant Gardens Elementary School before assuming her current role as Principal of McDowell Early College on July 1st, 2025. A lifelong learner and passionate educator, Erin Rayfield holds a Bachelor of Science in Sociology from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Go Niners! A degree in Elementary Education from Shaw University in 2008, and a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from Queens University in 2020. Superintendent Tracy Gredd shared words of praise for Ms. Rayfield, stating, "Erin Rayfield is an exceptional leader who monitors professionalism, empathy, and dedication every single day. Her vision and leadership have helped make McDowell Early College a place where students are challenged to achieve and supported to succeed. She embodies what it means to lead with both heart and purpose." Ms. Rayfield will go on to represent McDowell County Schools in the Region 7, which is the Northwest RESA, Principal of the Year Competition in November, where she will compete against 15 other district leaders for a chance to become the Regional Principal of the Year. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Erin Rayfield. Next up, we have our Certified and Classified Employee of the Month. So each month, we take the opportunity to recognize the outstanding individuals who go above and beyond in their roles to make a difference in our school community. Our Certified and Classified Employees of the Month exemplify dedication, professionalism, and a commitment to excellence. These honorees consistently demonstrate our core values, showing leadership, teamwork, and a genuine passion for supporting students, staff, and the overall mission of our district. Their hard work not only helps our schools run smoothly, but also creates a positive and inspiring environment for everyone around them. Today, we're proud to celebrate and extend our heartfelt congratulations to our Certified Employee of the Month and Classified Employee of the Month for their exceptional contributions and unwavering dedication. First up, I'd like to ask Dr. Jennifer Croymans to come recognize our Certified Employee of the Month. Dr. Croymans?
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Gredd, it's my great pleasure tonight to introduce you to the McDowell County Schools' Certified Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Ellen Ammon. Ms. Ammon serves as one of our incredible EC Program Specialists. I attempted to write Ms. Ammon 67 Reasons Why You Deserve This Honor, but I decided that it may take a while. So when I tried to come up with a message that I felt like truly explained who you are, the words that came to mind were humble and detail-oriented. The goal, my goal was to try to surprise Ms. Ammon, and I really did try. She's not really easy to try to get a surprise over on, even though my text message said everyone needs to come to this meeting. She still said, "Does that mean me?" So yes, so I had to let the cat out of the bag and let her know that yes, she still had to come. But, so my attempts to try and to pull a fast one on Ms. Ammon did not work. I do want to say that her hard work in serving at multiple schools is very appreciated. She, sorry, I lost focus. If Ellen looks slightly uncomfortable up here, it's because the spotlight is on her, and that's her least favorite place to be. She would much rather be out in one of her schools quietly changing lives. We had to practically, practically promise for her to do extra paperwork to get her to stand up here, but this recognition is absolutely deserved. Ellen, please forgive us for this moment of attention, but your dedication simply must be celebrated. Ms. Ammon joined our McDowell County Schools EC Department Team just last year, but she has already made an impact that feels like decades' worth of service. She is, without a doubt, a small yet mighty leader. Her responsibilities span a massive scope. As an EC Program Specialist, she provides critical support to East McDowell Middle School, West Marion Elementary School, and the extended content and occupational course of study programs at McDowell High School. Beyond her school assignments, she leads her expertise as a key member of our autism team and our assistive technology team. She is everywhere quietly helping others. Ms. Ammon's colleagues describe her as, with the terms, visible, knowledgeable, helpful, and always willing to jump in and help out anytime she is needed. She embodies a hands-on approach to leadership driven by a servant's heart. She doesn't wait for permission. She sees a need and she feels it. That quiet competence and willingness to do the work, not just direct it, is what sets her apart. It is a true testament to her effectiveness that she is so deeply valued by the teachers and students she supports. Ellen, today and every day, we say thank you. Thank you for making an impact with your quiet strength. I personally feel incredibly blessed to know you and be able to work alongside a leader of your integrity and compassion. McDowell County Schools is genuinely lucky to have you.
Next up, another man who loves to be, have the microphone. Mr. Jeff Vaughn is going to be recognizing our Classified Employee of the Month. Mr. Vaughn?
This is recognized, Ms. Diane McCrery. You got to do it too. Diane joined the McDowell County Maintenance Team in June of 2008. Diane has been an essential member of the Maintenance Department, serving as both as receptionist and administrative assistant. Her commitment and professionalism and attention to detail have made her truly the backbone of the department. Diane's daily responsibilities include processing countless receipts, paying thousands of dollars in monthly invoices, and assisting maintenance personnel with their daily operational needs, all of which she handles with accuracy and efficiency. Beyond her regular duties, she also assists in coordinating regular maintenance activities. Since March, Diane has played a critical role with the prioritization of and assistance assignment, tracking and documenting completion of more than 2,600 work orders through the Sherpa desk. Her dedication, organization, and willingness to go above and beyond ensures the Maintenance Department can more effectively support the success of every school facility in our district. I messed that up. We are grateful for Diane's hard work, positive attitude, and commitment to excellence. Thank you, Diana, and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
Dr. Gredd, can you get a picture of Mr. Vaughn with y'all?
do have someone wanting to speak, and it's our own Beth Silver. And Ms. Silver, if you'd come up to the podium, I got to read you the ground rules, even though I know you know them as good as I do. Public comment is a time for the board to hear from folks regarding issues related to the McDowell County School District. We ask that folks be mindful, that we encourage families of small children to attend our meetings and watch our meetings online. We respect, we respect the right of speakers to give us their viewpoints on any issues related to the schools. However, we do balance those rights with the rights of families of young children when it comes to public comment. We ask that speakers make their points without making explicit comments. It is not appropriate or permissible for teachers in our schools to read explicit material to young children, and doing so in public comment is not appropriate either. In addition to public comment, the public is welcome to send the board emails through the superintendent. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to allow Ms. Silver to speak to the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Suddles and a second by Mr. Schuford to allow Ms. Silver to speak at the meeting. Is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous of vote. And of course, you've got the timekeeper there that you know. So Ms. Silver-
It won't be the first time.
Well, we're at your pleasure, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening. Before I start, I do wish to state for the record that this is not related to the school that I work at. Ms. Wolferson, I absolutely adore working at Marion Elementary. That has been the pleasure of the last year of my life, to be able to be back there. This is also not a reflection on my daughter's opinion, who was an employee in the McDowell County School System. Unfortunately, she has been unfairly blamed before for my opinion, and so I want to make it perfectly clear that I have a rather large circle of friends and associates within the school system, but tonight, this is my opinion and mine alone. Recently, the attempts by the General Assembly of North Carolina to continue to erode the morale, as well as the integrity of our public school educators, has reached an all-time low. Ironically, Dr. Gredd started his remarks with House Bill 805. Our classroom teachers were told due to that bill that they would need to catalog their personal classroom libraries onto a public database so that parents could prevent their children from borrowing specific books. While I know that this is a state law, and I know that more than most that this board consists of all members of the same party that dominates the North Carolina General Assembly, that you are not going to go against this state law, it is absolutely mind-boggling to me that these very teachers that you trust, actually that you expect to take a bullet for a child in their care, the General Assembly is not going to trust them to pick books out to read to their children in their classrooms. What a slap in the face to their professionalism as well as their integrity. Perhaps you know, perhaps you don't, these libraries are not provided by the school system. They're purchased by those teachers out of their own classroom, their pockets, or by people that have donated to them. If you were in the schools on a daily basis, you would find that the challenges that these educators, these educators, face every day are much more serious than a book that someone might put on an arbitrary list. As a society, the level of disrespect by students and sadly by their parents has reached an all-time high. It's been eight years since I retired, and it is so different now. These issues that we should be concerned about are how to restore the ability to discipline classrooms, and how to effectively allow teachers and administrators to give consequences that are going to change behaviors. We have celebrated so many things here tonight. There's so much good in this school system, but as Dr. Gredd said, we can't look and ignore the fact that our teaching staff is drowning, sometimes in the overwhelming amount of paperwork, that now there's a concern that a cherished book that they've used to teach their kids for years could be questioned at a moment's notice and pulled because of a very small but a very loud minority. Your job as a board, in my opinion, should be there to support all of your people. You took an oath to do just that. Our school system is not just our students, it's our staff as well. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Dr. Gredd, at this time, the YMCA presentation by Mr. Bramlett and his staff, you take care of this.
Absolutely. Mr. Bramlett, if you would join us. I think, Mr. Berryhill, we have Mr. Bramlett's presentation in the board packet.
Do you guys have a hard copy of that possibly?
We should have, yes, sir.
Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be able to present, board as well, Dr. Gredd, staff, and the public. We were chatting as we were sitting there, listening and seeing the preparation, Junior ROTC present the colors, and we've been here as a YMCA organization for 22 years, and it was very shortly after we started in 2003 that the Splash Program, where we send the school system and the YMCA partners together to send second graders through safety-around-water at the YMCA. And so we have 22 years' worth of students. Now, those students are much older now, but that just shows that we are extremely proud of our partnership. It's gotten much richer, much broader- broader, much deeper since then. Our after-school program that used to be in the YMCA is now in the school system, starting in 2017. The YMCA is nimble. We showed that through COVID, through Halleene, and we love working with you. We are, and I believe you believe this, I see this, I read this, I believe others will find this true, is that we're at an inflection point in our society. One metric is the speed of technology, speed of information, and as an adult, it's hard to keep up with, much less our teens. We're focused on the next generation of teens. I believe the middle schoolers today, who will be on the workforce floor in 10 to 15 years, are going to, we want to be able to turn around and look in the rearview mirror and say, "We did everything that we possibly could do," and I believe that we are doing that together. Tonight, I'm introducing Jessie Massey Shears, our teen program director. She's going to share with you what we are doing together to make sure our teens are strong in spirit, mind, and body for our community, and again, generationally in 10 years. And before I bring her up, I have two notes. One is, we have a legislative tour on Friday the 14th. Lots going on with the Y on Friday the 14th. The breakfast in the morning, thank you for sending a rep, representative, and also in the afternoon, we will have representatives from Congressman Edwards, other local and city officials as well, coming in to look at our, watch our after-school program at the YMCA that Jessie's about to share. So if you'd like to make that note, I would love to follow up on that to make sure that everybody gets that official invitation. I think that's anything. Oh, one last thing. We, in October, began, we announced, we're officially kicking this off, every public school 13-year-old, when they turn 13, will get a membership at the YMCA. We're calling this a Health and Wellness Teen Membership. And we had a donor present us with an opportunity to be able to make this happen. We announced this. We're working with the middle school principals. I see Mr. Carson and Mr. Rourke here and Mr. Spivey, and we're excited about that. We know that strong teens are going to make strong adults, and so thank you for the partnership.
Mr. Bramlett, what time is that Friday?
Three o'clock.
The afternoon, three o'clock?
Yeah, three o'clock. 3:30.
I believe the presentation begins at 3:30.
We come next to the middle at 3:00.
And we'd love to have you.
Some of us are in Greensboro that day, and will be pressed to be here, but we might be. So, trying to get back.
We'll make sure you know that the extension is there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Jessie Massey.
Thank you so much for having me. Do you mind to move it back a slide, please? To the very beginning? Yeah, perfect. Okay. So, before I get started, I want to let you know this is a recap of our program up through the end of October. So, I am the teen program director for the YMCA here in McDowell County. That means I am in charge of running programs for middle school and high school age students of McDowell County, and focusing specifically on East McDowell, West McDowell, Foothills Community School, and McDowell High School. And I just want to say that this picture here came from our summer program, so a lot of people don't know, we also do summer programming as well. And this is our students and staff volunteering at Central Unitos Food Pantry, packing food boxes. So, just one of the things that we offer. A little bit of background information, last year, we were able to participate in a partnership with McDowell County Schools under the Ellis Grant. That stood for Extended Learning and Integrative School Day Supports. That is how we were able to begin our middle school after-school program. This year, we are continuing that partnership under a different grant, the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant, that enabled us to extend to the high school and include the middle schools as well. It was created in 1994 and was reinstated again in 2015 under the Every Student Succeeds Act, and its mission is to provide student achievement and prepare them to compete on a global scale. So, why is that important for McDowell County Schools to receive that opportunity, our children in this community? We're experiencing compounding trauma. We have COVID, we have Halleene, now we have extenuating food insecurity, we are tier-one poverty scale rating in our community, and our teens are in a mental health crisis right now. It connects directly with our YMCA mission of social responsibility, youth development, and healthy living, and it provides us an opportunity, it's a three-year grant cycle, to really pour into the kids in the moment that they need it the most. So, a little bit of our basic program information, oh, sorry, a little bit of our basic program information is we operate at East McDowell and West McDowell Middle Schools. We also have a high school program that operates at the YMCA, so it is from school end until 6:30 Monday through Friday. We were able to add Fridays on this year. And we also provide transportation home. So, that's a communication from families that we heard was a significant barrier to their children participating in our program, especially at the middle school level. They're not quite old enough to drive, but still, you know, a little too young to want to be shuttled by their parents, where parents have something to do. So, we're providing bus transportation home for a significant number of kids. We have two buses that run right now. We have a third option if we need to add that on. We also offer Power Hour Daily for academics. Some days, that looks like certified teachers from the schools that they attend tutoring in small groups, targeting individual student needs. Sometimes that looks like them doing group projects or getting homework help. And we also have weekly interest clubs that the students lead themselves, just as a way to help them build relationships with each other. And like I mentioned before, this is a little heavy of a slide, so if you want to take a breath, that's okay. We are in a mental health crisis with our teens right now. If you'd like to read the full report from the JED Foundation that was released in 2023, the QR code should link to that. Essentially, we have a significant number of factors that are affecting the trends in teen mental health. They are feeling persistent worry and isolation. They are concerned about their future. They have increased exposure to harmful content and loneliness, but constant states of digital connection. Lots of their families are experiencing financial insecurity in the moment of middle school and high school age. And I don't know if you remember your time as a middle schooler or high schooler, but it's kind of uncomfortable just on its own. So, adding those things to it just creates a heavier weight. Our nation's youth are in a crisis. Their suicide was the second-leading cause of death in young people ages 12 to 24, when this report was released in 2023, and 36% of teens reported feeling little to no purpose or meaning in their life. On the previous slide, I believe I forgot to mention that the rural community teens are two times as likely to attempt suicide than their urban peers. And of McDowell County families, if this were not a free program that was grant-funded, 34.4% of them would qualify for financial assistance or state vouchers because of their income levels. So, we have been able to receive this grant in two separate cohorts. We're also providing community learning centers up in Buncombe County. This is the second year for their program, the first year for us here in Cohort 18, and we've been able to partner with McDowell County Schools to provide this opportunity. We prioritize connections. That's our number one priority here in our program, is relationship building. So, much data shows that having one solid, consistent, positive relationship with an adult in a child's life can change the trajectory of their future outcomes, and we want to be able to provide that positive relationship, even if it's not our, directly our staff, if it's a certified teacher that they get to build a relationship with, if it's a community partner that comes in that they get to build that relationship with. We want them to know that they are seen and heard and supported by the adults in their lives. Behavior, relationships, and academics are the main things that we're focusing on every day. And we've been able to extend some community partnerships to work together to meet these goals. So, we worked with the McDowell County Animal Shelter for a student service project, walking shelter dogs. Of the five shelter dogs we walked, four of them were adopted. Central Unitos Latina Americana are working right now with our Youth and Government Program at the high school, which is a student interest club that we are extremely proud of starting. They will be presenting, I believe, this weekend for their youth summit. I think this is the second year for their youth summit, and it's like a trial run for their full presentation that's happening in February. So, if you don't know about Youth and Government, which I didn't when I started, it's an initiative that was created by the YMCA where students in ninth grade and above come together to participate in mock trials, draft their own bills, and take over the Senate floor, basically. So, they will take over Raleigh in February. They get to meet one-on-one with some of our representatives, and they get to participate in everything legislative. So, they're learning hands-on what the government is and how the government works, and if they might be interested in doing something in the future. The City of Marion provided a job shadowing opportunity for us over the summer as well, and we were able to show the participants all of the options that they had right here in McDowell County for their future. So, things that they could look forward to and make a plan of attack for their academics, saying, "Okay, I want to do this. How do I get there?" And that's where we come in, and that's where our community partnerships come in, is that we provide that opportunity for them. And then, we've also been able to provide, this year for our high school, Pivot Point of Western North Carolina, is a therapeutic adventure group. They're currently in the middle of their 10-week leadership cohort with our high school program. They take them out on trails, they do mountain biking, hiking, and they work on developing self-regulation and leadership skills, and everyone participating gets a certificate at the end. And we're hoping to be able to continue that as well. And I want to end with a story. So, again, I spoke about relationships, and that is the priority of our program. This kiddo returned to us, we'll call him John. John returned to us again this year. He started with us when he was in sixth grade last year with the Ellis Program, and about halfway through the year last year, had some challenges and some struggles, and because of extenuating circumstances from a few different angles, he had to leave the program in the middle of the year. Because of the relationship that he was able to develop with our program staff, with the things that were happening outside of school, outside of program, we were able to communicate with that family and say, "Hey, we've noticed, this is just not his typical behavior. Like, something's going on." Family communicates with us, "Yeah, we've had these challenges come up." We were able to identify what was going on, provide him with the support that he needed, and now he has returned and is thriving. One of the things that he speaks on, when you ask him, "What's your favorite part about after-school?" is just relationships, but not relationships with only the staff or his family, but his peers. So, in middle school, you know, you're going from class to class. You don't really get a chance to see people that might be in a grade away from you. That's something that he and the other kids are really excited about, is they get that time together, just unstructured, building relationships with their peers, and that supports them. Once they move into high school, they have friends and they have people that they know. So, yeah, just doing the work and appreciate all of your support. We are so thankful for McDowell County Schools' partnership. It's allowing us to be in the schools and with the kids every day, and I mean, what better way to build those relationships than to be present in their lives? Thank you. And if you have any questions, I think we're going to open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any questions from the board? I have a comment. I especially like the transportation benefit. Everything we do, we have trouble with transportation, and that's definitely a plus. Thank you.
We're grateful to be able to provide it, yeah.
How long has the Y been in location?
Specifically, oh, at Corpening?
Do you remember the year that it was opened?
2003.
2003.
Yeah. So, we celebrate 22 years this year.
The people may not remember, but the site that the YMCA is on was designated for West Marion Elementary, and there was a decision made to put the Y on that property and move West Marion a little further west when that was done. And the excitement that having a YMCA come to McDowell County generated, because we felt like it would be a transformative thing for the community and really, really move us forward, and I believe you've done that. I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep, we, I believe we are a part of the health and well-being infrastructure of McDowell and Western North Carolina, so we appreciate our partnership together.
Thank you also for offering that to the 13-year-olds. That's tremendous.
They have to get in and get active. One student said his ADHD, he could tell a difference when he got off of the treadmill. And when you can get a middle schooler who can settle down and just have that kind of self-reflection, that's monumental.
Mr. Bramlett, I just want to take a point of privilege here and say thank you for the partnership. I've enjoyed the opportunity to have many sit-down meetings with you along the way, and we had talked initially about, you know, something that we could do as a community, and you followed through on it, and we certainly appreciate it, to be able to partner on that initial Elise Grant, and then to carry it forward into the 21st Century. And like Ms. Helm said, being able to provide that membership for our 13-year-olds, that's big, and it shows a level of commitment to our community, and we greatly appreciate the partnership.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that sentiment. We feel the same, and I, and I believe maybe you as well, we get to be in a position where we get to bring others up for succession. And I think that's something that our community, and we are doing at the Y also, is a succession plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 on the agenda. Ms. Vaughn, I've just got a quick question for you. Do we need to entertain the idea of maybe moving your location on the board to a different location?
No.
Okay. I thought your person sitting beside you was really annoying.
No, it gives me a chance to just, like, you know.
She hates my opinion.
Okay. Well, hey, as always, we are thrilled that it's your time of the evening. We enjoy your presentation so much, and ma'am, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Finally. Okay. So, good evening. I have to say, I'm not used to this many people in the room when I speak. I don't know whose idea this was, but it definitely was not mine. By the time June rolls around, some of you will probably have the starfish story memorized, but honestly, that's okay, because every month, the person behind it makes it worth hearing. It's not the story that changes, it's the person who reminds us why we tell it in the first place. And tonight, I want to recognize someone who has served in many roles over the years and deserves appreciation and recognition for every single one. But tonight, we're recognizing the coach, and that is Coach Hughes. In education, we talk a lot about teaching content, but the real difference comes from those who teach character, confidence, and heart. Some of the most powerful things our students learn don't come from a lesson plan. They come from the people who coach God and believe in them when it matters most. Coaches see students in moments the rest of us might miss. The doubts after a loss, the pride, I know he's such a dork, the pride after hard work, or the look that shows "We did it" after a win. You've been there for those moments, and you've believed in kids before they believed in themselves. You built the kind of trust that changes how students see themselves and what they're capable of. You loved the game, but you loved your players more. You coached with heart, making every player feel valued and believed in, and that's what made them give their best to you, to the team, and to themselves. You helped your players find confidence, create connection, and understand that heart makes the difference on and off the court. You can still hear the impact your former players talk, when your former players talk about you. One of them shared this about her time playing for you. Through the years playing, refereeing, and coaching basketball, I have seen and experienced firsthand how a good coach can change someone's life. Athletes who come with some knowledge, some skill, some desire, and some confidence. A good coach can take that raw material and convert it to greatness. This is Coach Hughes. I had the privilege of playing basketball for Coach Hughes in AAU. I had no idea what that meant, so I had to ask my students, and they were like, "It's travel ball." Like, I was stupid. I was like, "Well, okay." And at East McDowell Middle School, also known as East McDowell Junior High, yes, I am that old. As a matter of fact, I had intentions of playing elsewhere, but Coach Hughes convinced me to come to come to East McDowell Middle School to play basketball for him and Coach Spivey. Four little words were all it took. "I believe in you." Coach Hughes believed in his players, so we learned to believe in ourselves. Unlike so many coaches today, Coach Hughes was not a screamer or a yeller. It was his unconditional love and investment in us that inspired us to do our best. His mild manner, while firm, was a model for how to act on and off the court. Social workers, dentists, teachers, nurses, rec league coaches, middle school coaches, and more. I think I can speak for all of them when I say Coach Hughes is a key reason why we chose the careers we did. To serve others and hopefully make an impact on those we encounter. Coach Hughes, I am grateful for the skills you've instilled in me and the valuable lessons you've taught me. Thank you for being an exceptional mentor and a great leader. Your dedication has made a lasting impact on everyone you have invested in, especially me. With gratitude, Emily S., East McDowell Junior High, 1999 through 2001. I have to admit, it feels strange for me to say Coach Hughes. Because for me, it's always been and always will be Mr. Hughes. You might not know this, but you've actually been on my list for years. The "I can't believe he left East the summer before I got there" list. I was so excited, hoping I'd get to work for you. Everyone always talked about how genuine you were, how fair you were, and how you made people feel heard. That same coach's heart has always been there, just leading in a different way. But you didn't wait around, you hit the ground running, continuing to make the same kind of impact you always have. After all my years in education, I've learned we need strong coaches. But more than that, we need strong men in our schools. Men who show students what it looks like to lead with patience, integrity, and heart. Men who model respect, responsibility, and kindness in every interaction. You've been that kind of man, Coach Hughes. The one who leads with consistency and care. The one who makes kids believe that character matters just as much as talent. You've shown our students that strength and compassion can live in the same person. And that's the kind of lesson they've carried with them ever since. Your influence has been impossible to miss. It's in the players you coached, the students you taught, the colleagues you inspired, and the stories that people still share, try not to cry, still share about how much you cared. It's hard to find words big enough for the difference you've made, but there's one story that says it best. Mr. Subtle is going, Mr. Subtles is going to share the starfish story. As a reminder of how one person's heart can truly change everything.
One morning, a man was walking along a beach covered with thousands of starfish that had washed ashore during the night. Up ahead, someone was gently picking them up, one by one, and tossing each starfish back into the ocean. "Why are you spending so much energy on this?", the man asked. "There are too many of them to make a difference." "They'll die if you left them in the sun," the person replied without pausing. The man glanced up and down the endless shore. "But there are miles and miles of beach and thousands of starfish. You can't possibly save them all. What difference could you make?" Another starfish was lifted from the sand and sent back into the waves. Smiling, the person said, "I made a difference for that one." So if I can join on that, too, on my talk show that I've got going on, I just spoke to the middle school, I mean, excuse me, the high school girls' basketball coaches and boys' coaches. And it's amazing that they said the reason they were so successful were because the junior high, middle school coaches were so good in those days. And I talked to Mike Silver and if you look at, Emily played for Mike during a really good time, she played for you. And so that just shows that our building blocks from you, Mr. Hughes, Coach Hicks, I'm just talking about the Trojans right now, since I was a Trojan. So, but it's so much appreciated and this story right here does exemplify you from the time that I remember you. Sorry.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, you gotta come up.
Hold on, I'm not done yet! Okay. So, the starfish keychain is a symbol that every, that even one act of belief can change a life. You've done that again and again, because your impact has never been about titles or wins. It's always been about the one right in front of you. The one who needed to hear, "I believe in you," and even the one who didn't know they needed to hear it until you said it. Thank you for everything you've given to your players, to this county, and to every student, colleague, and friend you've quietly lifted and every path you've made better along the way. Your greatest wins have never been on a scoreboard. They've been in the way you've shown up for your family, in your classroom, in the schools you've led, and in the gym where you poured your heart into every player. And these will always be amongst your greatest victories. Even though it's been years since the uniforms were packed away, the lights have been dimmed, and the gym has grown quiet, your players still carry what you gave them. Confidence, belief, the drive to work with heart, and the strength to rise with resilience. I want to share something that makes this recognition even more special for me. Your sweet mom and my sweet nan were roommates for a time at Autumn Care. And I'll never forget the quiet compassion you showed her. The kind of kindness that shows up without needing attention. It's the same compassion you've shown to students, colleagues, and friends, and to my own family. Every time I've ever reached out with a question about Gray, testing accommodations, or anything else I needed to understand as a mom, you've been there. You've never made me feel like a bother, never made me feel rushed, never made me feel, you never made me feel alone in it. You make the hard days feel a little lighter, the confusing moments feel a little clearer, and the world feels a little kinder. You have a way of making people feel seen, supported, and steady, and that's a gift. One I'll never forget and one all of us are so grateful for. And the truth is, you'll probably never fully know the gratitude I'll always have for you, for the kindness you showed my nan and the support you've shown me. Gratitude that sits a little deeper than words can reach. You've shown us all what it truly means to lead with heart. You didn't just build teams, Coach Hughes. You built belief, you built character, you built heart, you built family. You may never realize how many lives you've changed, but those people who were there before you and who they became because of you, they know. When they tell their story, somewhere in it will be a coach who showed them they were valued, capable, seen, understood, supported, believed in, strong, and had no room for doubt that they truly mattered. And that coach is you. I want to remind you in front of everyone here, I'll never forget that you ditched me right before my first year at East. And trust me, I'll never let you forget it either. We are thankful for the example you've set and this entire school community is fortunate to have you leading and supporting us. Not just in the big moments, but every day. Thank you for all you've done and continue to do. Thank you.
Come up and.
Run! Come on!
Can we get a photo of you guys? Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lawng. That touching, as always. Thank you so much.
Donna, you said you wanted to say something?
Oh, no. I was just going to remark, can you get the picture back up, up there?
I mean, some people say that when you get older, that your younger selves look better. I think you look better now, to be honest, but I was thinking Magnum P.I., eat your heart out, or...
All right. Next up, we've got new business and Ms. Lawng, I just want you to know, as the executive cabinet, we get together each week and draw straws on who has to follow your presentation because they're always so good. Nobody wants to follow you. And I guess it's my turn this week. I'm going to go over some new business on the universal screener contract. So we go from something as important as that, as heartwarming as that, to talking about how we're going to purchase a Star Reader program. Not the starfish, but the Star Reader program. I'll be standing in for Ms. Hamby tonight. This universal screener contract, we did have an opportunity to meet with the curriculum committee chaired by Mr. Subtles. He's certainly aware of what we've got to go over tonight. But I just want to say thank you to our curriculum team for coming together ahead of time and reviewing these documents so that we can kind of move through them as we do each evening. The universal screener, as you know, is a screening tool that we're required to have in order to be able to conduct our MTSS process as well as our exceptional children's testing. So it is something that we are required to have. We have selected and brought before the committee the Star Reader program. And board, you should have the documentation in your board packet. The grand total for that was $60,780.14. Anytime we reach a threshold that surpasses $50,000, we need to bring that to the board. So at this time, I'm requesting action on the universal screener that we adopt the Star Reader program once again.
Okay. Let me ask Mr. Subtles. Sir, is this your recommendation as chairman of the curriculum?
It is. The curriculum committee met and listened to that. And Ms. Hamby did a wonderful job, as always. She reminded us, too, that this is the same screener we have used in the past, so we're not moving away from someone that we're not familiar with. She did say it's a one-year contract, too, because we like to keep the doors open and it helps us negotiate the price, which we're looking at a good price for this program. So being familiar with it and the price of the program, the curriculum committee said this was something that we would like to bring back.
Sir, would you like to make that motion?
I sure will. So I'll make the motion that we adopt the Star Program with the, from the curriculum committee and the school board for the universal screener contract.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Subtles and a second by Mr. Shuford to accept the universal screener contract. Is there any further discussion on it? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Okay, sir.
All right. Next up, we have, each year, we recommend several new course codes. And I want to, again, recognize that we did talk with the building and grounds extensively, or not the building and grounds, the curriculum committee extensively on these course codes. And I want to go over them briefly with you. So these are career and technical education programs and we have a need, several of our students have advanced to greater levels, so we have a need to offer them a higher-level class. That's Fashion and Textiles 1 and 2, that's Family Consumer Sciences and Marketing, that's part of our MOXIE program. You guys are very familiar with that. Natural Resources 1 and 2 and Forestry, that's the agricultural pathway. We also are looking at a Sports and Event Marketing 3. So we already have that 1 and 2, so it's an additional classroom there, as well as a medical assisting. This is a non-practimum healthcare professional pathway. So each of these are able to provide our students with more access through career and technical education. And I'm proud to be able to say that we have that need. And at this time, I would offer the floor there, Mr. Subtles, if you've got anything to add to those.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, let me say this. We have the best CTE program that I've ever seen in my life. And William Keller was on the show and he was talking about just how many resources that these kids have that we never had growing up and the opportunities. So to be able to add more and more advanced classes in those areas is incredible and it makes their career even longer as they're doing that. So the curriculum committee did meet and Ms. Fennley did a great job presenting, you know, to us why we need these classes. And, you know, I don't think we can add enough, you know, to grow our future. So it was the curriculum committee's approval, too, to do this and to add these classes for, right after Christmas, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The Christmas?
The '26, '27 CTE course.
Correct. So I would like to offer that recommendation and I'll make the motion that we accept these classes.
Okay. And so you're saying that this is the committee's recommendation to the board that we accept?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll make the second.
We have a motion by Mr. Subtles and a second by Mr. Shuford to accept the new course codes. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And I appreciate you, Mr. Subtles, for making those recommendations and doing your due diligence with that committee.
Thank you, Chairman Frank. At this time, I do want to take just a point of privilege, if I may. There are two other items in the consent agenda that are under federal programs. I will point those out. Those would be also in Ms. Hamby's lane. Those are routine federal program comparability report and the staffing equity plan. Those are routine things that we have to do each and every year. Those are reports that are due to the state and then through the state to the federal government. So I did want to point those out. If you have any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to take those questions now or if you have during the consent agenda item as well.
Does anybody have a question concerning that?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we've got Mr. Chad Marsh. He'll be doing a facilities update. Mr. Marsh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Grit, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's always a privilege to come forward to the board and talk about the many things going on inside of my directorate. In transportation, Mr. Thompson's staff have been performing inspections and repairs on our many buses. And recently, we're happy to report we hired a new fuel truck driver. So he's, Mr. Williams has hit the ground running, as we say in the Navy, and is doing a wonderful job. They are working feverishly to finish the rollout for the remaining four buses and the new activity bus. And DPI rep was in town last week helping them do some of that. Mr. Garrett Berryhill and his staff have been working hard addressing the countless number of work orders and working with contractors to install our cameras. And we have gotten all of the ones that we, that we've been given, 42 from Haynes Electric, and those have been put up and we're working to get some more up. Child nutrition, again, I just want to take a moment to just ask, as the chairman mentioned earlier, please remember Mr. John Haynes and his family as they lay a fixture, and as Mr. Subtles mentioned, our CTE program, a fixture in McDowell County's, but then vocational program, Mr. Stanley Haynes. So appreciate your thoughts and prayers for them. The Hayden staff have been working hard and preparing the thousands of meals, ladies and gentlemen, that go out every day here in McDowell County schools, and then making preparations for the Thanksgiving feast. I think what you had a little bit tonight was a little taste of that, so it's pretty great. And we appreciate the work that they're doing. On a safety standpoint, I want to take a little bit of what Dr. Grit mentioned to you tonight and say how much I appreciate Mrs. Ashley MacArthur, but also Garrett Berryhill for, again, working on another grant, and this time, a $1 million grant that we have filed and pursuing that would be awarded over a three-year period called the Stop School Violence Grant. And again, this would be a total of a $1 million grant, be a $3 million, excuse me, a three-year payout. And so all that will be used, if we are successful, in purchasing hardware, software, and other critical safety upgrades. And so we're working very, very hard to do that. And so here, again, Garrett went from having done none to, in about a matter of about six weeks, having done two. So we're working hard and we appreciate that. Athletics, again, as Dr. Grit mentioned, you know, Mr. Subtles, you and I have talked a little bit about ball over the years, but I can't, I cannot find a time when we had three fall teams at the same time. It seemed like either, you know, the volleyball team was great and the football team wasn't, or, you know, the soccer team was great and somebody was just missing. But have them all three make the first round of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association playoffs is wonderful. And then taking a step further, and we had a young lady make the regional golf meet and we had a Carson fella, I believe, was doing a little cross-country run in there. So, you know, just, it's a great time, as Mr. Frank says, to be a Titan and a lot of wonderful things happen there. But we have transitioned into winter sports in middle and high school and we are wide open. So look forward to seeing some basketball played and some wrestling and some other events here really soon. Agility services, you heard from Mr. Vaughn tonight, but I really don't want it to be glossed over, something that he talked about and that we, you know, not just Mrs. McCrary, but the entire team. Since March, more than 2,600 work orders have been not just opened, but closed by the maintenance staff in McDowell County schools. I can't find it anywhere, Mr. Baker, that what they're doing is tremendous, what they're doing is just tremendous work. And so proud of that organization. They're making great strides, particularly in the area of safety, and we're working very hard there to ensure that every man and woman who works for that organization goes home every day. And they have that right. So we want to make sure that we do that and we'll continue to work safely. Dr. Grit mentioned HM TB, who is going to be at our schools this week. So appreciate both Mrs. Elliott and Mrs. Wilkerson working to allow that group there. And we've asked them to come in and check in with you ladies before they get started so that you and your SROs can continue to monitor those who are on your campuses. Playground grants, got the information today that the So look forward to seeing some basketball played and some wrestling and some other events here really soon. Agility services, you heard from Mr. Vaughn tonight, but I really don't want it to be glossed over, something that he talked about and that we, you know, not just Mrs. McCrary, but the entire team. Since March, more than 2,600 work orders have been not just opened, but closed by the maintenance staff in McDowell County Schools. I can't find it anywhere, Mr. Baker, that what they're doing is tremendous, what they're doing is just tremendous work. And so proud of that organization. They're making great strides, particularly in the area of safety and we're working very hard there to ensure that every man and woman who works for that organization goes home every day. And they have that right. So we want to make sure that we do that and we'll continue to work safely. Dr. Gritt mentioned HM TB, who is going to be at our schools this week. So appreciate both Mrs. Elliott and Mrs. Wilkerson working to allow that group there. And we've asked them to come in and check in with you ladies before they get started so that you and your SROs can continue to monitor those who are on your campuses. Playground grants, got the information today, the final number from Game Time and Cunningham Recreation for our grant is going to be just over $24,000 for those two playgrounds. So I'll be working with the Building and Grounds Chair over the next couple of weeks to, and bring, hope to bring it to the Board for approval in December. Our capital HVAC project, I called it 1-25, because thankfully the Board approved 2-25. 1-25 is, has all been expended or accounted for as far as allotments go. We have two jobs that are part of that project. One will be at Mrs. Elliott's school to put in her new cooling tower and the other will be at Mrs. Bagwell's school to put on a unit, on a rooftop unit there. So those are the last two pieces of that. As far as 2-25, we're working together those proposals now to ensure that we get good competitive pricing. And Garrett, can we look at some of those pictures? So this is your 1-25 concrete and drainage capital project. This is Marion Elementary School. Mrs. Wilkerson can tell you, go back, what we had there before was a mat. She was rolling children with disabilities out of the gravel onto a mat and mud and everything else. And so we can do better than that, right? So we did. Our children deserve better than we have. Going next slide. This is some work that's done at Glenwood Elementary School, replaced some steps that come out of the curb. Next slide. Here again, we're patching a broken piece there by one of the drainages. The culvert had just kind of given way and become cracked and unsafe as the children walked through Glenwood there to go out to the playground. Next slide. This is showing you a ramp, one side of the ramp. Again, just, you know, began to crack in some areas that really needed some work. And so we've got that board and looking really good. This is at Old Ford Elementary School. So for those of you who were at the Halleen Commemoration, a gentleman got up there, retired teacher, Mr. Terry Wilson, told about a huge rat there. So this is the Rat Man's Yard, if you don't know Terry. And what he had here was a ditch line that shared between the school and Mr. Wilson. And it was kind of really repelling water as opposed to, into his yard as opposed to taking it away. The contractor was on site. We just talked with him about it and they said, we got you. And so they cleaned that up and he's very, very happy about that. So I try to be a good neighbor and good steward as well. Next slide. This is, so during Halleen, you can ask the custodian, he'll talk to you about many things, but one of them is he lost his, he's lost his custodial building. And I think we did a little better than what we had before, didn't we, ma'am? So Mrs. Ward agrees. So really happy with the work there, but Steve's got him a good building there and we know he's going to do some great things out of that. Next slide. This shows, so from the track up to the school with Mill Creek at your right, this shows the area that had a new, one of the concrete drain boxes dropped in and the contractor did a wonderful job. You can see, just really, really happy with what Wilkie did there. Next slide. And around the corner, they did the same. You can see when they went across to tie in, they actually disturbed the asphalt and repaved it and then went back up as well and sowed grass on both sides. Next slide. And this goes on around the edge of the school where we put in another drain box. And so what we want is we won't allow Mrs. Ward and her kids to go out and the public who walks on the track to be able to walk without having to stay, you know, if you take two feet off of the track, you're not going to mar up to your ankle. So that's really what we were seeing was areas of poor drainage and so we've remediated that. Next slide. This is at Mrs. Bagwell's school. Hard at it there. We had some cracking sidewalks and broken steps and some just really falling apart ramps. And so thanks to the Board, we were able to address some of those. This contractor really knew what they were doing here and took a look at the weather that we were having. So when I went and took this picture on, I think it was Thursday, they said, we're going to pour, Mr. Marsh, because we know we got two or three good days of weather over the weekend. And sure enough, the cure time was perfect for this. And so we expect we're going to see some really good concrete there. Next slide. This is the ramp and this is one of the things that, you know, I hadn't been on board hardly anytime at all. Mrs. Bagwell walked me around and said, Mr. Marsh, we have children who are using these or are going to use these who have disabilities and truly we can do better. And there was no way I could disagree with her. So we want to do better for all of our children, but we got this ramp set up and I'm really happy with the way it came out. Next slide. And this was another piece, instead of just taking the concrete that they had and just doing away with or dumping it in a bucket somewhere, they had a little area that had a little sharp step. So this wasn't even part of the project. They went and formed it out for us and poured it in place. So it made a really nice step off there. Next slide. And sir, this concludes my brief and I'll answer any questions from you and the Board.
Does anybody have anything before I say something? Okay, go ahead, sir.
No, I was just going to say, Chad, as always, thanks for, great job on all that in the presentation. And I think you're exactly right. It's been probably since maybe the eighties, since all three of them, maybe even before that. But let me encourage you guys, I know even if your, your children are in, are not in athletics or some of the other things, bring them to the high school. Bring them during basketball season and let them experience some of this. We have freedom back in our conference this year. And for all of you historians here, freedom was a big rival. Or as Coach Gibson used to say, the Russians are coming to play us. Which my world history teacher didn't prove that I said the Russians were from Morganton at that time. So, but it is a big rival and the kids will have a great time. It will encourage them maybe not to play athletics, but to get involved in other things like band and some of the other stuff. So really come out and support them. It is a great time. I mean, we've got some great coaches that at any time could get thrown out of the game. I hope they don't, but it's part of it. Yeah, knock on wood, but come out and support them. I think it's going to be big. I would like to see McDowell High School's GM for these basketball games get packed like it once was for these Russian, Russians coming over. So, but thanks again, Jeff.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Marsh, I want to say one thing in particular. 2,600 of those, those corrections that needed, opened and closed, I mean, done. I haven't heard that since I've been on the Board. And not only that, but the great things that, like with Garrett Berryhill, $2 million, I'm sure he's shooting for five, right?
Absolutely, sir.
And everybody else. I'm telling you, our, our system is just on fire. And it's a great time and I can't help but reiterate this, it's such a great time to be a, a part of this great system. And I know the Board is especially proud of everything that's going on. And I hope that, that we will continue to support, just like you said about these funds, that we continue to support everything that makes our system even more great. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One quick question. Could you expand on Mr. Garrett's project that he put forth that saved us so much money in our tracking programs?
Oh, well, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So thank you, sir. So we actually talked about this, you know, we, the Board had spoken to me about it and then Mr. Suttles had actually asked something earlier on and was about, you know, where are we at with our internal monitoring? And for years, Suzanne could talk about it, but for years, we have had to have individuals come and literally check the, you know, the thermostat on the freezer, right? And I'll just use the example for Mr. Haynes and Mr. Berryhill. But what they did, they got together and they identified a couple of different vendors. They identified some other systems that they could go look at and check and see how they were working. And essentially what it led into was our purchase through Board approval of a, a remote tracking system where now, and Garrett's got me even tagged into it, I think I got a report over the weekend, this morning, I believe it was, that showed me every single walk-in cooler and oil freezer in the district. And I can even click on it and show trend analysis. So I can click on it and say, I can show when the lunch folks had done breakouts, when they opened the door to go in there and pull stuff out, right? And so that's the level that this is. And what Mr. Berryhill has done, not just in that area, sir, but I've challenged him with taking security to the next level. Mr. Barstow, he's done a wonderful job. I mean, I, all of my directors, I kept going on and on and on about what Garrett's done and what John have done and what, you know, Jeff has done, you know, and what Will have done and what Coach Cash have done. And these directors have just taken every challenge that I've given them and they've met it and exceeded the expectations. And so, you know, Mr. Chairman, all day long, it'd be easy to take credit for it, but it's just, just a matter of challenging people and then getting out of the way and letting them work. And so just very, very proud, Mr. Barstow, of all their work. And I, we're going to continue to do this and so that we can remotely monitor all of our schools from a security standpoint, but also from a maintenance facility standpoint. So it's, it's a big deal, sir. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carson, you can also start the washing machine with your cellphone now. We're good on laundry from now on.
Donnie will be asking to borrow it. He's talking about the cost of laundry, nothing spruce fine.
All right. Next up, we've got Ms. Suzanne Rampy. She's going to be giving us a finance update.
Good evening. I'm going to give you an update on a few things that are happening in the finance world. First is we have audit. It seems like we're continually being audited, but this is our annual audit. The federal OMB is delayed this year for our compliance supplement. So they have changed the date for when the audit is due. It's now December 31st this year, but the auditors are still here. I told them about the extension, but they still came this week. So we are working on the audit. That seems to be going well and we will be in compliance with that deadline. The, really, the only thing that that means is we have our state compliance monitoring. We have those guidelines. We have our fiscal guidelines. It's just the federal guidelines that we're, they're tweaking on some of those testing and how they want those tested. So really, that's the only thing that will be delayed and they'll be doing that as soon as it comes out, hopefully within the next 30 days. Another thing that's happening in the finance department is this month, the local salary supplements were paid. That was $500 to our non-certified staff. And our certified staff were arranged between 3.5% to 5% on the certified salaries. And those were paid in the October checks this month.
Ms. Rampy, can you talk a little bit about how we, how we did that, those supplement increases over time?
From last year?
Yes, ma'am.
We originally, well, even before then, we were a flat amount. We went to 3% and we had been 3% for years. And so we did change that and change that to be longevity-based for our certified staff. A lot of times, the, in recent years, the increases for certified staff has been heavily weighted towards those younger, 0 to 9, 0 to 12-year veteran teachers. And so we did look at, at rewarding those teachers that have longevity with us. So we changed it where you get, go from 3 to 3.5% for that 0 to 9. So they still got an increase in their supplement, but it did increase the supplement for those longer tenured teacher, well, not tenured anymore, but longevity teachers. So 10 to 20 years for a certified staff would be at 4%. And then 21-plus years would be at 5% supplement. And that way, as we get state increases, that increases their supplement, also increases as they get an additional year. So when you go to nine to 10 years, if you get a step increase in your salary, you also get an increase in your supplement as well and it brings you up to 4%.
So just to, just to reiterate for the Board, the supplement for our non-certified didn't exist before that. There were a few opportunities during COVID when payouts were made, but ultimately, the funding just wasn't there for the non-certified staff to be able to receive that. And that was something that we just put in place last year. Also, just, just to remind folks that our veteran teachers, you know, it's when we do get state budgets, often they're, they're not included in the, in the budget increases, the same level as other folks are. So that is one of the reasons that we wanted to do this graduated scale, to be able to offer our veteran teachers a little bit more incentive for working in McDowell County Schools. Before I came down here today, I shared with the executive cabinet some, some research that just came out on our state-level supplements. And folks, we're doing really, really well with that. And, and it's not something that, that, that we can take all the credit for, although the Board can take credit for the numbers that are there, because that didn't exist before that. However, being a low-wealth district also brings in another supplement from the state. So when you couple our two supplements together, we're ahead of some folks over in a neighboring county. I won't say what we called them a few minutes ago, but we're ahead of those folks a little bit. And, and closer to the marks that you might see, just to our neighbors in Buncombe County, which is a first for us. I'm very proud of that. When you, when you have an opportunity to look at that data, and I'll share that report with the Board in the, in the coming week so you guys can see that as well. But it was something that I'm really proud of to see that, you know, you can be fairly compensated in a rural area and more importantly, here in McDowell County. We're proud of it.
Next item is the state of our state budget. We still do not have a state budget. One of the issues with the state budget is it's hard to make a budget when you don't have much money you have to spend. One of the points is the current North Carolina personal income tax is at 4.25%. They had a compromise budget in 2023 that said they would leave that at 4.25%, but then it would drop to 3.99% in 2026 and then 3.49% in 2027. If nothing happens to that, that is what will happen. But in this current budget, they are in disagreement with that. The House would propose to leave the current personal income tax at 3.99%, but the Senate wants to, to keep the agreed-upon rates with the reductions coming. So because of that, that is one of the stalemate points for them and because it does make a significant difference in the budget. So until they get that worked out in the budget, we do not have increases for staff and we do not have any increases in our budget, other than our base budget. We do have a continuing budget resolution, so we are able to pay staff and use state funds on those base allocations. We just do not have any, either new funds or any addition to funds with increases. So until we have that, really, there's no change in salaries.
Ms. Rampy, you're too kind. Can you go back one more slide, please?
Yes.
So as we back up to that last, the slide before that one, back to this one. So when she says that we don't have a state budget, it's very challenging because as we, as those percentages that we talked about, as those change, these numbers change for us as well because they're percentage-based. So it's one of those times where not having a, not having a state budget has us kind of guessing. We have an idea of what they'll do based on what, what historically they've done, but truly, we really, I mean, we really just don't know. I mean, it could be nothing and it could be as much as, you know, you saw 5% on there.
They did give us, or have the authority for us to give step increases. Well, it wasn't really authority. They told us we had to give the step increases for experience for teachers, but they have not funded that. So we are currently at our base budget, but no funding for increase. And so if it is a teacher that went from a different salary from nine to 10 years or whatever that amount is, whenever it changes, it may be 12 now, then they are getting paid on that higher step. But that is the only increase that we have. No across the Board. And, you know, you know that there's a large gap where everybody's making the same, where they have froze those salaries for years.
You also have the issue with the local dollars being paid to, primarily to the certified folks. So when we do find out whatever that percentage is, Board, historically, we have always matched that percentage to make sure that we're consistent with all of our employees. So that will change the numbers up there as well. Thank you.
Ms. Rampy, does the percentage go back?
It does.
To July 1?
Well, since I have been here, they have done that. Now, I will say that they were, a couple of times where they singled out a couple, like if it was based on school growth or something like that with certain positions, but generally they do that. Now, they could do anything they wanted to. If they don't approve it until January, they may say, we're just going to make that effective January 1st. We really don't know because it's their budget. They can do it however.
But they do that typically.
They do typically retro that back. But again, I don't want to say that and then it's January 1st. One thing to talk about, about no state increases is there is a state increase in healthcare premiums for their health insurance. It is now wage-banded. So there are a few pots of money or where you're following where it could have a reduction in how much you were paying, but for the most part, if you have the exact same coverage that you had last year, you're going to pay more for that. If so, with no increase, your December check, you'll actually get less than you normally would because there's no state increase, but you're paying more for health insurance. So this is just the summarized schedule. I have a lot more detail if anybody's interested in it. But you can see, for instance, if someone made under $50,000 a year and they only cover themselves for that basic plan, the basic 70-30 plan, they will pay $10 more per month. The next section is $50,001 to $65,000 per year. They will pay $25 more per month for the same coverage that they had this previous, the year we're in right now. Uh, you can see if you go, jump down to 80-20, same thing, subscriber only is 16. If you're covering a family and you are under $50,000, you'll pay $26 more per, um, month, and then $46 more per month if it's just you and your spouse. So, for an employee that makes less than $50,000 a year, but they cover their spouse, uh, they, and there's no state increase, then in general, they would pay, they would have $46 less in their paycheck in December. So, that is something that is, um, not going to be favorable if there's not a, um, increase passed before the December payroll. Because the December check pays for the January's premiums, so that does come out the month before.
Do you have the total of that, what they spouse, uh, just to?
So, uh, if it was 80-20, let's say, and you're covering your spouse, it's $746 a month for if you're under 50, if you're under $50,000. So, 740, that's the highest premium is $746 a month, and that is subscriber spouse or family if you're under $50,000. If you are 50 to 65, because that was 774, and I can give you a copy.
Oh, it's a lot.
But, um, there's varying amounts there. But the 50 to 65,000 R, uh, employee wage, um, is $590 per month for, uh, family coverage and $774 for, uh, the 80-20, the plus coverage. And so, compared to what they had paid last year, that would be a $54 increase per month. Any questions on that? So, that's one reason it, you know, every year, we may have any small increases in health insurance, but a lot of times it coincides when we were going to have a, an increase in their salaries. But this year, it does not look like that's going to be the case, and so they will actually see less in their paycheck in December. All right, state of the federal budget. Um, I'm not going to say I'm an expert on the federal budget. Um, you know, we, we hear that there may be some things moving now, I'm not sure, but, uh, we do know that grant year 26, which is what we're currently in, most of those federal funds are being allotted. Uh, they are currently discussing, um, what we call G Y 27, or Grant Year 27 Funds. Um, and there are several pots of money that are education funds that are being looked at both with the President of the Senate and the House. So, there are some, uh, pots of money, some title pots, that we are looking at to see if we'll get those funded next year. We don't know if we're going to get them funded or not. We also don't know that we're not going to get them funded. So, um, we don't want to be doomsday now, but we also want to be realistic and be planning for that in case that does come to fruition. For the current shutdown, the biggest, uh, issue that we're having right now is school food service. They have been allocating those funds month to month, and they did give us enough funds to pay for our October reimbursements. Uh, we're currently in November, have not heard anything about November, uh, but we are paid through October 31st for any of those, uh, free interdate students where we're doing the C E P funding now. So, we are okay on school for food service through our October 31st, um, usage. And that is all I have for my update.
Does anybody have anything for Ms. Rampy? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move into our unfinished business and, uh, ask Ms. Amy Daddell to come up, and she's going to, uh, give us a final read of some policies.
Good evening. Yes, um, so tonight is the final read of the policies that were presented at last month's, um, Board of Education meeting. I believe in your packet was our Reader's Digest version. Um, all of these policies, again, um, are state, um, legislation or general, and general statutes, um, that updated our policy. So, I just wanted to open it up for any questions that you may have.
Mrs. Helms, is there anything that you can share the board or need to share the board consider policies?
No, not at this time. Does anyone have any questions?
Would you like to make a motion to accept, uh, the final read?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the final read of these policies that's presented.
I'll second.
Do you have a question, Don?
No, ma'am. No, thank you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Helms and a second by Mr. McGinnis on the, uh, board policies final read. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And we certainly do appreciate the, uh, hard work of the, uh...
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
The Policy Committee and you, Mrs. Daddell.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate, uh, Ms. Helms and the leadership of our Policy Committee. We have a great committee, and, um, this happened just in time for our final policy update. Yay! So, we'll be, we'll be going right back through this, so I appreciate it.
I, I can tell you're getting ready to get busy. We've got something coming up on the horizon that we won't look at, and it'll go to y'all's good days.
Thank you.
Or I hope it does. Okay, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, next up on the, on the agenda is the 2025 through the 2030, uh, McDowell County Schools Strategic Plan. Uh, tonight, I did not have a finalized copy for you, uh, folks. I will be working on one, uh, cleaning this version up. We had just a very generic version that I dropped into a brochure. It's kind of hard to read, um, but this is the format that we'll do. I, I will say, first of all, I want to give a lot of credit to our principals who are in the room and our leadership, uh, team for taking the time to help us develop, uh, a continuation of the strategic plan that we had in place, um, but to add to many, many, uh, moving parts that we did, uh, as well as a meeting with the board, uh, when we had about a three-hour meeting, really looking at all this stuff on the strategic plan and, uh, and dialing it in. Uh, Mr. Frank, I'm happy to report that, uh, the updates that we talked about, uh, that evening, uh, are all listed here in the strategic plan, and I was able to answer some questions. I know, Mr. Suddles, you had some specific questions about athletics. We talked, uh, about how they fell into different categories within it. So, you might not see it in the actual goal, but they were certainly, uh, part of that. I mean, obviously, um, I think everybody here would agree that our athletic program has a lot to do with our graduation rate, uh, so being able to tie those things and any kind of, uh, extracurricular activity and getting kids connected, uh, helps us with, uh, with, with achieving higher graduation rates. God bless you. Um, but at this time, uh, I would entertain, uh, a, a motion for this, and I would, I would recommend that we, uh, that we adopt the strategic plan as presented.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the strategic plan for 2025, 2030.
We have a motion by Mr. Suddles and a second by Mrs. Helms to, uh, adopt strategic plan. Is there any further discussion on it? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is a unanimous vote. And thank you, Dr. Grit, and board for everything that you've put into this. Uh, it's been a daunting task, but it pays off in the long run.
Absolutely. Mr. Frank, I would just like to add that as we move forward, five years is a long time. Um, I hope we've, can accomplish some of these goals and, uh, move forward and, and present new, new material with this as well. So, one thing I like about the, the strategic plan that we have is it is a living, breathing document. Uh, so as we improve, we can, uh, we can adapt. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, item number 13 on the agenda is board reports. And Mr. Suddles, anything further curriculum and instruction?
No, sir, we have covered it. Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you what, you've covered a lot tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Barksdale, building the grounds?
No, sir. We'll have a lot to go over, uh, next time.
Mr. Schuford, uh, from what Ms. Rampy says, looks like you guys are going to be having a meeting fairly soon, but do you have anything for now?
No, I think Ms. Rampy, Rampy did an awesome job covering our finance, uh, situation. And yes, we, when the time is right, we'll make that, uh, meeting happen.
Mrs. Helms, you've been very busy. Anything you want to add to yours? Mr. Schuford, tell us about Head Start.
I could, uh, I could go on for a while about Head Start. That's been a great, uh, experience for me to get to be involved with Dr. Delaney and her staff, uh, not a harder working group in the, in the system than they are, uh, just looking over the, their, uh, financial statements and all the, and attending their board policy, um, their meetings that they have each month and seeing how efficiently that, uh, that's run. Uh, my hat's off to Dr. Delaney and their staff. They continue to make the education of our, uh, some people call it the littles, but they're earliest learners. Um, and, uh, I, I appreciate all they do, and just wanted to give a shout-out to them.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Baker and Mr. McGinnis, N J R O T C. Mr. McGinnis, I know you're getting ready to take a trip, and I know you want to talk about it, and Mr. Baker, I hope you have something to add as well.
You want to go first? Okay. So, N R O T C is always is active. They pack every day of their calendar with something. Um, they've got some field trips coming up, uh, we got a drill meet coming up in just a couple of days, and matter of fact, I guess, this weekend, um, Oak Ridge, Tennessee, and then they've got their Washington, D.C. trip, which, um, used to be geared mostly toward freshmen, but however they do that, that's always a really great trip. It's a good time in the week to just go up and learn about the nation's capital. Um, and then, of course, we've got the lock-in that we're going to be talking about approving this stuff tonight. But, uh, in particular, uh, coming up, day after tomorrow, we're going to be going up, um, they've invited me to go with the honor guard. Um, Captain Hardy Rose, who was a senior naval science instructor, um, from about, I guess, uh, probably the early 80s all the way through to about 2000. Um, I was in the program in 1995, um, 91 to 95, and, uh, he was a senior naval science instructor, and, um, he actually passed away. Um, he was in Prescott, Arizona, but, uh, he's going to be interred in Arlington National Cemetery. And so, the honor guard's going to have the privilege of going up there this Thursday. We're going to have a ceremony at, uh, 11 o'clock, uh, Graveside Rites, uh, when they do that. And, uh, Hardy Rose is just an amazing individual anyway, but, uh, storied career. Um, he's actually got records in the, uh, uh, Library of Congress, um, for his combat missions in Vietnam and different duty stations. And man alive, he had like almost, um, seemed like it was about 800 carrier landings day and night, and, uh, he commanded, uh, F-4 Phantom Fighter Squadron in Vietnam, um, all kinds of things. So, definitely a good read. Uh, Mr. Carson knows a little bit about that. But, uh, anyway, if you was a cadet at any time, uh, and you knew him, uh, you always learned something. It was never a dull moment, but, uh, we'll be going up there, so I'm looking forward to that for sure. It's a great honor.
I, I'd just like to recap, uh, about the drill meet that they are going on Oak Ridge in, uh, November 14, 15. We had the... We had the opportunity, uh, Mr. Suddles, to go to Russia, uh, a week ago this past Friday. The real Russia. Yeah, and, and, uh, the communists. And our drill team, I wish they could have been out there. Uh, it was pretty bad on the field, what the Russians did that night. I mean, and, and their performance and the, the drill team. And, uh, we, we've just got a great team, and I'd just like to say, you know, help them any way you can and pray for these, their safety in these trips and everything. Is there anything further from the board, any reports? Okay, at this time, at, uh, item number 14 on the, uh, the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And, uh, as you know, any item may be pulled from the consent agenda with majority vote of the board and discussed and voted on as a separate item, as Mr., our correction, Dr. uh, Grit alluded to, the items of the, uh, federal pro, uh, federal programs for Ms. Hamby, and you're not wanting to pull that, but, uh, he did make mention of that. And so, uh, if there's no, uh, one wanting to pull anything, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Schuford.
I'll make a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Schuford. We have a second by Mr. Baker. Is there any further discussion on approval of consent agenda? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous vote. And at this time, uh, we'll skip down to item number 16 on the agenda and action on closed session items, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel considerations, both, uh, certified and non-certified.
I move to be approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Abernathy and a second by Mrs. Helms on the closed session personal considerations approval. Is there any further discussion on that? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous vote. And under item number 17, announcements, uh, the North Carolina School Board's annual conference will be leaving tomorrow. To go to that, and it'll be through, some of it's through Friday morning, some through Thursday. Uh, we're very honored that our very own Mr. Baker is going to be, uh, sworn in to the, uh, North Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors. That's quite an honor, and for somebody as young on the board as you, we, you're, you're, your mission's cut out for you, sir, but we appreciate you. Uh, there will be no work sessions in November, December, this is due to holidays, and, and you know, sometimes those things are very welcomed, and, and I'm, I hope nobody's going to complain about that. And the board regular session annual reorganization meeting is Monday, December 1st at 6:00 P.M. And with all that being said, item number 18 on the agenda is I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, can we say this? Because we won't see you guys. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please tell all your teachers we said Happy Thanksgiving. Um, principals, if you have a kid out there that you know may not have a Happy Thanksgiving, has a little bit tough time or whatever, don't go out of your pocket to try to help. Email a board member. I think I can speak for all of us, and let us do what we can too, because you guys go out of your pocket, I know a ton. Uh, but let us know if there's that kid that needs a little special love in this Thanksgiving, all right?
Absolutely. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll make the motion, and we get out of here.
Anybody want a second? I thought we already had that. Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Suddles, a second by Ms. Helms to adjourn. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous.